All right, so I got started. In terms of autonomy, in the, I would say, modern era, we spent at least twenty years work on this. Right? The government, academics, the industry, right? Are we reaching a point where we can really show the impact? Right? Many people argue that the age of autonomy already here, right? You see large-scale deployment by Waymo in San Francisco, in Phoenix. You see in China, a put a goal has hundreds of vehicles running around. If you interview many of the local residents, they will say, wow, what's the big deal? It's already part of my life, right? I invited my parents-in-law to try Waymo in San Francisco. They happen to be China's first generation people working on car manufacturing. They're from the second car automobile company in China. The first trip, they were, oh, that's so exciting. By the third trip, they forget about this, that they're enjoying the San Francisco view here. In a way, the best assessment of technology disappears, right? So here, are we moving autonomy from the technology discussion to economic discussion? Is it time you should ask for cost per mile, right? So today, I have three brilliant speakers join us today. Why would you ask really, where are we in technology? Where are we in the business model? And where are we in regulation? Right? So I'll start with the first one by Raquel Artisam, who's a professor at University Toronto, but also the founder and CEO of Wabi, one of the major players in the autonomous trucking industry. He will start the conversation about GNI in autonomous mobility. Then, secondly, I would invite Xiao Di Hao, who is the founder and CEO of Bot Auto, talk about a new business model in autonomous trucking, shifting from providing the software to the trucking company to actually deliver transportation services, right? The last one, I'll invite Professor Henry Liu to talk about developing a national AV driver license test, right? So that's the first part of the conversation, the three presentations. Then the second part, I would invite all three of them up into the stage here, have a panel discussion to do two things. One, I'd like each one of them to respond to the other two people's presentation, right? It's entitled, okay, have a different opinion to have a debate. That would really interesting to look at this. But secondly, I also want the three to reflect now, how do we grow the autonomous vehicle industry as a whole? Where should we compete? And where should we collaborate? What's missing from the ecosystem, right? So without further ado, let me give the stage to Raquel Artisam to talk about GNI in autonomous mobility, shifting to AV two point O. Please join me, welcome.
Great, so really a pleasure to be here today, talking about my favorite topic this day, which is GNI, and in particular, self-driving trucking. So GNI is this concept that by now should be familiar to everybody, which is that you can have an AI system that is able to generate new content, whether it's videos, images, text, et cetera. And no matter what metric you look at it, it's been a tremendous, has had a tremendous impact in the digital world since the ChatGPT moment in November of 2022. It's not even two years ago. One of my favorite metrics is what you see over here, which is the time it took for this technology to get to one million users of adoption. If you look at Netflix, which most of us use, it's three and a half years. Facebook, ten months. It took only five days for this technology to, you know, achieve this, you know, these one million users. And today is, in the projections for Q four, are two hundred and fifty million users, right? It's mind-blowing the speed of adoption of this technology. And when you look at what is it that has enabled this revolution? It's really three key ingredients. There is the digitalization of data, the availability of using the internet to train these large language models. Compute is not by chance that Nvidia is a three-point-five-trillion-dollar company today. And there is some algorithmic, I would say, breakthroughs that has happened over the last couple of decades that have enabled this revolution. And my dear friend Jeff Hinton just got the Nobel Prize for it, right? So it's amazing to see also the recognition in the physics community as well in terms of the innovations. So when you look at, this is great, the digital world will transform in the way that we interact with computers. The question really is, what is next? So we are at the cusp of a revolution where if you look out the window today, you don't really see robots, but this transformation is about to happen, where in five to ten years, you will see them everywhere, right? And the question is, how can we bring this technology, generative AI, safely to the physical world so that we can enable this massive penetration so, so fast, the same as it happened on the digital world, right? So this is really gonna transform automation at large everywhere. Okay, so if you look at, you know, bringing generative AI technology to the physical world, there is three key challenges or things that you need to make sure that your system is able to do correctly. And this is different than the digital world. And these are challenges that are extremely important. The first one is generally safe. What does it mean? It's that large language models are very good at memorizing things. But when you have a safety critical system, no matter what is faced with, it has to do the right thing, right? There are consequences for making mistakes. So it needs to be able to generalize to things it has never seen before in the training data or anything, right? So that's a key component of the design of new generative AI technology for the physical world. You cannot just take current technology and apply it and think that you're gonna solve everything. The second, I will say, challenge or important ingredient is efficiency. Efficiency, which, you know, comes in two different ways. One is that since it's a safety critical system, you need to run all the brain of the self-driving vehicle onboard in the truck, in the case of fast self-driving trucks. And also, we need to move from where the industry is going today of generative AI, which is more power, more chips, you know, bigger data centers, et cetera, to a future that is sustainable AI. So it's very important that we build technology that you can train and do inference extremely efficiently, okay? So that we actually have a nice planet for, you know, our kids, et cetera. And the last bit, which, you know, there is, you know, quite a bit of regulator's fear and resonate well, is that machines are gonna be much safer than humans. But it's not enough for machines to be safer. You need to be able to prove that your system is safer than humans, okay? So you need to build this AI technology that is verifiable, and you can make a scientific safety case built on evidence. And miles driven or yes, number of simulations, it is not enough. You need to be able to say and prove my system is better than a human at the scale before you deploy it. And that's actually a pretty hard job. When you look at this technology, it can actually disrupt anything on the physical world, any form factor of robots. We decided to start with self-driving trucks because this is where I believe that at the scale, it's gonna happen first in terms of the deployment of this technology. And the reason why is very, very simple, which is that we are facing some tremendous pain points. The supply chain is ripe for disruption. If you look at, you know, the driver shortage is just increasing. You look at safety concerns, right? Despite all the technology that we see with EDA systems, the number of those on the road is steady or growing today. And the environmental impact for trucking, twenty to thirty percent of the miles driven by a truck actually is empty, what the truck is not carrying in. Right? So from a product customer perspective, we also have, you know, a clear ROI. The cost of a human is just increasing significantly. We can have cheaper technology, but also we can have a much higher utilization of the asset. Robots don't get tired, they don't have hours of service. You can have them twenty-four-seven driving, you know, all over the place, right? So safety is sustainability, obviously, very important for our customers. Now, where is the industry today? So AV one point O, which is kind of like previous generation, all the incumbents have really struggled to commercialize. There is not a single product available in the market where you can, you know, replace a human driver by a machine, right? There is prototypes that we all have as we are developing the technology. And the reason of this struggle is really technological, is that hand engineering systems do not have the ability to generalize to all the things that happen on the road. So what we, you know, what we're looking at at Wabi when I started the company is we have this great opportunity to really bring technology that if we unleash the full power of AI, we will be able to solve and generalize and solve to all the rare cases, et cetera, in a way that is much safer and also much more capital efficient. We are ten to twenty times more capital efficient than our biggest competitor. Mind-blowing. And we can go much faster path to market. So over the past two decades, I have been building this idea that we can have single AI systems, end-to-end systems, that are able to reason like humans do. And this is very important because this is a key for safety, where we can build a next generation of foundational models that are able to learn and supervise, to build representations that are interpretable by humans, but are much more rich than the representations that traditional players have. And together with the ability to reason to, so that they can understand all the things that the system can do at every point in time and what are the consequences of its actions. And that's the key to really improve safety. So we have the ability to prove safety because we have interpretability, trace the decisions. But at the same time, we have an end-to-end system where you can actually get, you know, to train the system to really generalize much better than any other approach, right? And compared to the black box end-to-end that you see on the Teslas of the world, this is an approach that requires massive amount of data that you cannot introspect, that, you know, I think is great for level-two systems. For level-four systems, it's a totally different story. This is, this is a very, it's gonna be a very, very hard path where you need, you know, massive fleets of vehicles driving on the world to get there. So now that we can design a brain that is more like a human, the question is, how do we teach that brain to do the right thing, particularly for safety critical situations? And how do we prove that that system is actually safe, safer than humans, right? So data is the key, right? But we cannot just deploy millions of robots and then with the hope that we will capture data. So what's the alternative, right? It's simulation. But current simulation systems are very primitive. So I have a question for you on the, you know, the, I guess there is too much sun today in Boston. But, you know, hopefully you can see something, which is, you know, the question was gonna be, can you check, can you guess which ones are simulation versus the real world? I can show you that in my laptop, probably will be able to see, right? So when I ask this question, people, you know, have no idea, they have different answers. It turns out that we can build simulation systems that are as precise as the real world, where humans and machines cannot make the difference. But in simulation, there is no consequences of your actions. You can do this thing in a way that you can test unavoidable accidents or situations, or weather conditions, all in real time, in close. And that's a breakthrough really in the industry for having the ultimate test, but also having the ability to be able to train the system, okay? So what I show you today is you have these two AI systems based on generative AI, where you have the ability to be generalizable, to be efficient, and to be probably safe. And where we are in our journey, we are launching commercially without the human next year. And, you know, very, very excited to see we have raised two hundred million dollars in our Series B with, you know, lots of OEMs as well as the best logistics in the markets. And really, we are about at the cusp of deploying this product in a way that we can prove safety much better than the competitors and, you know, really going much faster in a much more capital-efficient way. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Raquel. The three conditions, generalizability, efficient, and approval is safe. Now let me invite a different perspective from Xiao Di Hao, the founder and CEO of Bot Auto, talk about a new business model in the autonomous trucking industry.
Thank you very much, Jinhua. Okay, I don't know why, but the backgrounds are gone. But I promise you, they're beautiful truck outfits. Close your eyes. Yeah, so today I'm gonna give a very different, sorry. Okay, yeah. So my talk is intend to be entertaining. So I think for autonomous driving in the past multiple years, we have a lot of debates and of course, a lot of developments. One of the interesting thing is that I really don't know what is happening. Wait. Not clicking? Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, technical issue as always. You see, this is actually going to be the thing that I'm going to talk about. We always talk about when the technology works in the lab, it works really well. Yeah, there we go. But when it works in reality, there's always problems here and there. But the key problem for that, you know, in fact, I think this is a great example to begin with. The key problem for that is who is gonna pay for these real-world problems, right? And that's why I think the real-world problem is really killing this business. And we certainly, we are here to defend the business, not making it to be killed. So that's why I'm here to talk about the new business model in autonomous driving. Next page, please. I'm not sure if this works. Okay, there we go. What's the market pain point? Capacity. So for autonomous trucking, I think the biggest incentive for me to do autonomous trucking is because we don't have capacity. The entire US market is having eighty thousand truck drivers shortage. And we need more drivers. And in fact, we need more capacity. But on the other hand, what does a tech can offer? Demos. So I think this is really the problem that happened in the past several years. All that the entire industry is providing is demo, and nobody's providing the real capacity, like a meaningful capacity that can solve the problem. So in the end of 2021, after half a year of literally like no spare time, or like I only have seven calendar days off, my last company would deliver the driver-out demo, but again, it's still a demo. And after the demo, I, we were celebrating amongst each other, and I was very happy for about fifty minutes. Why? Because I know that this is not the finish line. The finish line is that we need to have a plan, and we need to have a plan that market needs, that is to answer the capacity problem. And this is legit, come to my second point. A legit business makes profit, not revenue. In the past, it's very easy to make revenue if you subsidize your autonomous driving fleet. You can make it work. You can just haul freight every day, and you can proudly say, we're commercializing autonomous driving. But in the end, you're losing money in every mile, and that is not something that's sustainable. And the market needs something better. So I know there are several different business models. People are talking about SaaS, software-as-a-service. Or in autonomous driving world, some other people saying hardware-as-a-service, as SaaS. But for my new company, Bot Auto, what we wanted to do is transportation-as-a-service because we wanted to answer the question of where the capacity is. And yeah, you can, as you can imagine, if I'm making this transportation-as-a-service in front of many investors, the first question is, oh, you're asset-heavy. Asset-heavy is actually a taboo somehow in Silicon Valley, but I'm glad I'm here in the East Coast to talk about it. My opinion is that I think asset-heavy, asset-light may be a pending question. But operation-heavy is something that we have to admit that for autonomous trucking, we have to go through the operation-heavy as a way to deliver, to provide the capacity. I think in the end, whatever approach it provide the capacity wins. We have to bite the bullet for admitting that we are an operation-heavy business. Because you know what? If you're operation-light, someone else will be operation-heavy. And who will be the most deserving party to be operation-heavy? I believe the autonomous driving companies who build this very complicated technology should be the one that are asset, sorry, operation-heavy. And of course, there will be some other ways that, for example, we can, we can use more clever finances to make sure that we're asset-light or alleviate our asset pressure. But in the end, operation-heavy is really the way to go, the only way to go. And when it comes to autonomous driving, in order to make a business that makes money, makes profit instead of making revenue, we need to think about three things. This is what I think about the value of a product, if you're thinking about autonomous driving, especially for autonomous trucking. The driver's cost, yes. By removing the drivers, we save some money. Therefore, I really don't feel that any model that says like we're facilitating the driver, you know, we're making drivers like happier, easier, this kind of level-two system, they can save money because the driver is still there. The driver, you cannot argue with the driver because the presence of the level-two assist driving system, I'm gonna pay you less. The driver wouldn't allow that. So in order to really create value, the driver cost must be removed. And that's the first part of the value. But by removing the driver's cost, there are two other things that can be added, that will be added on. One is the operating cost. Just like, you know, in the beginning of this presentation, that's a great example. It's, operating cost can happen everywhere. I think people are talking too much about corner cases. Like if you see an alligator in the middle of the road, how do you interact with the alligator politely? For example. But the problem, the real problem that I have in my eight years of autonomous driving is that the real problem is always trivial, but it's always there, and it bites you every day. I'm making an example. I consider myself a pretty healthy person. But if you think a healthy standard, if I'm taking a physical exam, if you take the standard of sending me to the International Space Station, no, I'm not at all healthy. I probably have twenty-five metrics or index are being abnormal. And this is like autonomous driving. If you're thinking about a human operable driver, it's still someone behind the wheel for driving the vehicle. A human can actually do a lot of things. But when it comes to autonomy, we're actually asking for an absolute reliable system that can always guarantee functionality whenever a single point of failure has occurred. So in order to operating this super complicated system, we have a lot of issues. So that's operating cost. And lastly, it's customer acquisition cost. If you're building a software-as-a-service or hardware-as-a-service, then you also need to sell it to other companies. Maybe the first hundred, first hundred items can be easy to sell because there always an innovation fund, innovation department of a big company. But to sell like tens of thousands of items, no. And I think the, all the autonomous driving industry needs to focus on one thing. Years ago, we talked about MPI, but we all know that MPI is like your MPI may vary type of thing. Because every company can have their own determination of what is a safety-related intervention. And many of the interventions are actually discounted by the companies themselves who reported data to, for example, the California DMV about the MPI. Therefore, we need a new metric. And the metric is the consensus of cost per mile. And we can make it work because the cost per mile is actually a very auditable accounting term. Basically, we need a countdown billboard for all, saying like, how many dollars have you spent in terms of operating this vehicle, in terms of interfacing with the hardware, in terms of maintaining, for example, maintaining a map, maintaining the remote operation? And of course, the vehicles' cost, the hardware cost, the camera cost, lighter cost, everything putting together. The totality of that is what we call cost per mile. And we believe this is the time for us to re-establish a new focus for all of the company to think about and maybe to report, that is the CPM metric. And then lastly, I wanted to talk about the tech bubble. We know that scaling law does not apply for autonomous driving because this is edge computing. This is not something we can ask for very large-scale, parallelized servers to be in the vehicle. And also, there are a lot of things about end-to-end learning. I wanted to give you this. So I just feel that this year, end-to-end learning, well, at least starting in this quarter, end-to-end learning is not the most sexy term in the world. People are talking about world model. But I guarantee you, next quarter, the world model will become obsolete as well. So what I, what I mean here is that I think there is a so-called technological ideologization term happening on. People are talking about concepts, using these concepts, considering them as the silver bullet to solve the problem. But in the end, what really we should be focusing on is focusing on the objective rather than focusing on the approach. Because, you know, in every quarter, you will have a new approach. But objective is something will last longer, that is the CPM. Okay? I think I'm still one minute.
Thank you so much, Xiao Di. I think the, from one side, present such a, like a lot touch, the humorous style. But underneath it, there's really quite deep seriousness in this, right? Talking about on-the-ground realistic operation of a autonomous trucking business. Thank you for offering that perspective to us, right? And next one, I invite Professor Henry Liu, who's the director of MCT and professor at University of Michigan, to talk about developing a national AV driver license test. Yeah.
So Jinhua has a much more ambitious talk title in terms of national driver license test. I would scale it down to MCT's Safety Assessment Program for Autonomous Vehicles. It's great to talk after Raquel and also Xiao Di, and they are solving one of the most difficult problem in AI and also have the great potential to solve, to help us to improve safety as well as, you know, mobility issues. And Jinhua asked, what are the things we can, we should compete? And what are the things we should collaborate? And I think one of the things we should collaborate is to have some consensus at how we can evaluate the safety performance of these autonomous vehicles. Are they safe enough to be deployed on the road? And how we can do that? And so I want to start, should I? Oh, the clicker, okay. We do have clickers. Okay, so I want to start with this slide. This is self-reported in terms of safety performance from some of the autonomous vehicle companies, Cruise, Waymo, and also Level Two of Tesla. And these, I did not really pick this company simply because this company has reported safety performance. And as you can see, and every company reported, they have, you know, better-than-human drivers. They also have, you know, benchmark in terms of human drivers as well. And then I would say, there's a lot of caveat within these numbers. And you have, when you calculate in terms of the accident rate, you need to look at it in terms of what towards the accident, what miles being driven, and what the drivers drive these miles. And so there's a lot of things going into these numbers. And these are soft-reported, it's not verified by third-party. And there's no consensus on how we evaluate and test autonomous vehicle, as I mentioned before. So what I like to say is, there's also international standard. There's international standard related how we're gonna test autonomous vehicle. And this is, this is, the standard came about two years ago in terms of using scenario-based approach to really look at two things, two objectives. One is to look at what are the behavior, basic behavior competency can these vehicles doing some of the basic things like car falling, lane changing, you know, navigate through runabout and unprotected left turn and things like that. Second, what are the safety performance in comparison to human drivers, particularly in terms of accident per mile and things like that? Okay, so there's two objectives. However, this international standard doesn't really give you anything related with how we're gonna do this. There's no procedure, there's no recommendation in terms of how you're gonna do this. And so, so that's why we've been working on this MCT's Safety Assessment Program. We're trying to provide a framework for the industry to adopt in terms of how we can help evaluate the safety performance. And we have two parts. One, what I call driver license test. What I really means is that we want to make sure these vehicles has basic behavior competency before they can put on the road. We have seen from our own test track, by the way, MCT is a test track. We test autonomous vehicle every day. And we have seen some of these vehicles on the road being deployed driverless, and they failed in some of our cases, basic behavior competencies. And so the second thing is that we like to see how these vehicle perform in comparison to human drivers in terms of accident per mile and things like that. And so there's two parts in terms of our framework, how we evaluate the safety performance. And so both these two parts in terms of our framework really build upon two things. One is we want to build these naturalistic driving environment models so that we can realistically evaluate the safety performance of these autonomous vehicles. And that's not enough because then even in simulation, you will need a really long time in simulation model to run to get to that point. So we have to somehow to accelerate. And so that's why we call naturalistic and or zero driving environment so that we can accelerate the testing process for autonomous vehicles. And so that's essentially our framework. We're trying to build the model for naturalistic driving environment. We're trying to accelerate this evaluation as well. Okay, so I can't show you in terms of our commercial testing, but we do testing for open-source system. And all the where is open-source autonomous driving system is openly available online. And so we tested our latest version on all the way universe. And so we do two parts. And first, the number one is looking at their basic behavior competency in terms of driver license test. We test fourteen of the scenarios. And then if you look at it in terms of out of these fourteen scenario, almost seven of these, they failed in some of the scenarios, okay? And so these are just basic behavior competency for these, for this particularly open-source automated driving system. And so that's the second column in terms of pass and fail. You see a number of fails over there in terms of some basic behavior competency. Okay, we also, so this is how we do the test. We test this in both the test track and also in simulation as well. As you can see on your left-hand side, not sure whether I can click. Let me see whether. Let me see whether the... Okay. The right side, it seems working. Okay. If you can, if you can click on the left hand side. This is how we do the real test in Michigan. You can see snow as well. And so autonomous vehicle crossing the intersection at the time, there's a background vehicle, uh, doing the left turn. We want to see whether autonomous vehicle will be able to handle that. Obviously, you can't in the, in, in, if you use a real background vehicle, you can't really, um, to test these dangerous scenarios. So we, that's why we, on the right hand side, we test this in mixed reality. So the background vehicle is actually provided by, through a simulation model. Okay? We also do the driver, uh, uh, driving intelligence type. We want to look at overall in terms of accident rates and things like that. We look at in terms of how, uh, on, run the simulation model until they converge. And this, this is some of the situations. Um, let me see whether, whether you can click on any of these. Yes, sure, sure. Just, that's, that's one. Yeah. So you can see in this type of situation, the red car is the autonomous vehicle, blue car cutting in. And, and, and so the autonomous vehicle actually slowed down, that lead to a rear end accident. Okay? And so these are the things we are testing within the simulation to see in terms of accident rates. And then there's multiple type of situations and I don't think I have time to go through. Okay? All right. So that's my, um, sort of my last slide, why we need a national framework for autonomous vehicle testing. I want to say three things. One is for autonomous vehicle, because we are evaluating not just the vehicle systems. We are evaluating the vehicle plus AI-based drivers. Okay? So we want to move beyond from the functional safety which we do. Um, for all the automotive industry, we do functional safety testing. We need to move beyond that into more behavioral testing from third party, from consumer perspective. How these vehicle perform in the naturalistic driving environment. The second thing I want to mention, we need to move beyond from the so-called deterministic safety to more probabilistic safety. What we really mean by that is if you look at these autonomous vehicle companies, in fact, if their safety performance is being validated, they are doing better than human drivers. We should help them to commercialize, to scale. We should not penalize them because one single failed case. So that's we, that's what we, we arguing, we should move beyond this deterministic case-based reactive investigation into more probabilistic overall, um, uh, proactive type of licensing and helping them to scale and to scale, um, to commercialize their technology. I think I have one second. That's my last.
Thank you. Uh, let me invite Xiao Di and Raquel on the stage as well. Uh, great. Thank you all of you for the presentation there. Maybe I'll start with Henry. You're very humble. You said this is an MCT license test, right?
First of all, we don't call it license test because when I say license test, there are always question. We, we call this is safety assessment.
Safety assessment, yeah. But, uh, I titled your talk as national AV test, right? So what would it take to move from MCT test to a genuine national test?
I think one of the things I like to, to see is to have consensus, not only from academia like us, but also from industry, from, um, the, the autonomous vehicle companies and also third-party testing agencies. And, and that help us to put together this framework so that we can all agree some safety assessment. And, and I know safety testing is part of your job. You, you have to do testing in your own company. But to consumers, we also want to know are these product you built safe enough? And so third-party, some sort of behavior-based testing is really needed.
I see. Well, thank you.
So consensus will be, will, will, will be required.
Right. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. So for Xiao Di, I, I introduce you as the founder CEO of Bada Auto. Of course, you're also the founder CEO of Too Simple, right? Uh, over the years, I like to share with us, what you learned from Too Simple experience? And what make you to really have this new framework, new perspective looking at autonomous trucking industry today?
Yeah. Well, in, in early days, I thought the, uh, technology can solve every problem. And in fact, uh, my experience told me that, you know, you need more than that. Uh, that's why I think right now I'm trying to be the architect to bring the commercial side of the world with the, uh, technology side of the world.
I see. Oh, thank you. Uh, or, or, uh, Raquel here, while we had a fantastic year last year here, right? Yeah. But tell us, what do you see in the next two years, right? What will make you happy? See, two years from now, what can you achieve?
What will make me happy or what, what I see? Yeah. Uh, sorry, jokes apart. Um, yeah. So what you, what you're gonna see from us, I guess the question is about our roadmap, right? Yeah. So next year, we're gonna launch. So today we have commercial operations in Texas, where you can see our driving trucks with a safety driver. Next year, the safety driver will not be on board anymore, right? So it's a very, very exciting time. So, you know, talking about safety, so our safety case with, you know, kind of to the next level where we call safety two point O, bringing a full assessment that is statistically of, uh, that can really, you really prove that it's safer than a human before deployment. That's what you, what you're gonna see. And then it's just a scaling of product. And that's what you're gonna see, you know, over the next couple of years. The bottleneck, uh, for the industry is actually OEM production of the redundant platform today. Our technology will not be the bottleneck in terms of adoption is really, you know, think of an electric, right? It's not, uh, it took time from the first redundant, uh, from the first electric vehicle to the time where you can actually create hundreds, thousands, right? Two years, three years. So the same is what you're gonna see with the driving trucks and that's gonna be what, you know, limits the option.
Right. Great. Thank you. Yeah. As I mentioned before the session, during this panel, I really want to say, how do we collectively grow and cultivate the autonomous vehicle as an industry as whole, right? One specific question, so where should we compete and where should we collaborate? Uh, Henry, you answered your version of the question during the presentation. I'd like to hear from Xiao Di and Raquel. Where do you see as the?
Yeah, I really don't see any competition at all, to be honest. Uh, the market is so huge. Like even in my most optimistic, uh, projection, uh, I don't think I'll see Raquel in 2033. So this is how vast this industry is. So there's no competition, only collaboration. And we want to bring orders, bring consensus, uh, to the industry. That's what we really need. For example, I think years ago, the MPI was a, was a terrible counter example where every company is in the end boasting about their own MPI, which making the MPI thing. Like making the one who wants to report the real MPI a lot of, uh, pressure, which is unnecessary. And, uh, and in the end, uh, the, the, nobody cares about that metric. But I think right now for this time, uh, as I mentioned in my presentation, the cost per mile really has a chance because, you know, this is the auditing term. Every, if you, every auditor that you hire should give you the same number for cost per mile. And I think this is a very good, uh, metric for, um, for indicating the future commercialization for autonomous driving. For example, Raquel has said next year, uh, they're gonna do driver out similarly, uh, for us. We're gonna also have the same roadmap for next year. But maybe I think in initial run, the driver out will be maybe one or two demos, five demos. It's not gonna be like in one night, all of the truck, uh, all, all of the truck with the safety driver are gonna be shifting to a hundred percent driver out. In my view, it's gonna be a gradual process. But throughout this gradual process, we can see in reality is that the number, the cost per mile reduces over time. But how quickly it reduces, we need a verifiable way of indicating the progress.
Yeah. In our prior conversation, that, uh, your business model, because you are signed contract with actually delivering the service. Therefore, you as a company absorb the risk of to what degree this transition to the drivers do. Yeah. That's actually interesting. Tell us more about that.
Yeah. Cause I, I think in the end, we wanted to provide capacities, like this is a super complicated system. It's like a, like a, uh, mainframe computer in nineteen seventies. You, you sell the mainframe computer, IBM sells a mainframe computer to a bank. And you know what? Uh, with the computer, there are two PhDs associated with the computer and maintaining it every day. And that is the level of, uh, of completeness for autonomous driving. I'm not talking about the software. I'm, I'm sure that with, uh, with GNI, your company, my company, we're gonna all enjoy the GNI, uh, benefit of it. But I think, uh, there's always hardware problem, like, you know, uh, the server is overheated. Okay? The sensor is not clean or the sensor not clean enough, right? All of these issues are going to bug the, the day-to-day fluency of the operation. And that is all about cost, like one minute in the, in the delay of the presentation probably mean like twenty dollars in some real operation. And we really wanted to make sure that we calculate every number in here and what is the best way to encompass everything? We transform our own business.
Thank you. Yeah. Raquel, what's your thought?
Uh, yeah. So coming back to the, uh, collaboration opportunity, right? So I think there is a tremendous opportunity to collaborate and it's in everybody's interest that we are actually working together in the safe deployment of this technology. Uh, if somebody, you know, one of us is not doing the right thing, it's gonna hurt all of us, right? So, but it's only just about, you know, safety. I often say safety shouldn't be proprietary. But it's also about, you know, we, we work in self-driving trucks. It's a fairly complex ecosystem, right? Where on your side, on one side, you have regulators, you have, uh, you know, your customers with private fleets, uh, with carriers. You have the OEMs, you have the suppliers of some of the sensors compute. You know, you have insurance, some of them that are present in the, in the audience here. You have the free brokers and you know, this, just to name a, a few, right? You have terminals, uh, you know, et cetera. So, so we need to collaborate in terms of building that ecosystem so that we can enable that deployment at the scale. And I think that's, you know, lots of opportunity and there is, you know, some of the associations that are represented in the audience are a way where we actually collaborate. And I actually believe that MIT has the opportunity to become a key player of really going from, you know, the deployment or a few self-driving trucks, you know, in product, as I was saying for 2025, but making that a scalable solution for, you know, this trillion dollar market.
Right. Thank you. We actually aim to, to do that. Yeah, go ahead.
So I just want to add what Raquel just said. This is where, in terms of where we should collaborate. I think this is where technology is not enough. And there's a lot of, uh, support needed for this technology to scale. For example, the business model is, is itself in terms of how infrastructure can help, right? Railway infrastructure can be made up their life a little easier, um, by doing some landmarking, better than markings even. And then how we, um, how we can ensure these vehicles, right? So, uh, MCT itself, we are a part of a private partnership. So State Farm is part of our partners. They also struggling in terms of how they can ensure Tesla in even these, with ADA systems, right? So, uh, so how do we ins- insure these vehicles as well? And so, so there's a number of things is pre-competitive, is across everybody. And then we can work together on those to help them to scale their business and so that we can help us to improve safety and efficiency.
Great. Oh, thank, thank you. Uh, Bu Wang, uh, check the time. I mean, I have a whole page. This can go on for two hours, right? But let me know what time. But for me, okay, great. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. So, uh, then we, we'll talk about this, there's a lot of common good in this, in this industry, right? As we often mentioned that in aviation industry, we don't, we don't compete on safety. People know that one plane drop hurts everybody, right? It seems, seems philosophy could apply here, right? So given the discussion, what do you see as still missing in today's ecosystem here, right? So either from the company point of view, so if say federal government do something, my life will be better. Or the state or city do something, or the supply chain system do something. What do you see as a missing still in this ecosystem?
Yeah, okay. I'll start. So I think the, uh, one of the biggest issue that I see is like, if, if I see the, the upper bound of, of some current problem cannot be solved by autonomy, then that is something that bugs me, uh, in the middle of the night. I think construction zone is actually one of them. Uh, I give you one concrete example, like I as a human being has run into the, because of the very weird configuration of the cone, I ran into the wrong side multiple times when I encountered construction zone in my life. And, uh, I think, I think about this problem, like, like there's no way for a human being to even recognize what will be the right way to get into for a construction zone. How can a computer do that? This is basically the, the EU define the nature of the problem, not really because we don't have smart enough algorithm. Basically, whatever algorithm you have, there is always a configuration that can misguide you, right? And, uh, the, the social tolerance for autonomy is, is, you know, another factor that compounded on it. So I think, uh, really I would, uh, really wanted to see, uh, more in, uh, IoT technology to be embedded in here, to be having a more coordinated construction zone by the actual construction zone workers for full communication. Because in any cases, in the world, in the end of the world, there's always a way to configure the cones to misguide the system.
Right. I, I look at metrics here from for a real point of view, how this instructor side and the AV side can really coordinate this. Yeah. And also even how the cities or state government can facilitate this conversation there.
Posting APIs, we are posting APIs that will be consumed, uh, E2X, using standard communication in the connected area. Give you an amplified awareness, something that is happening with the right context and with the right tradition.
Yeah. In a word, we need to talk, pun intended.
Yeah, that's, that's one thing we want to contribute, John, is to facilitate these type of conversation here, right? Raquel, what's your thought?
Yes. So, you know, if I have a magic wand, I will say that, uh, having a global regulatory framework that, uh, you know, across the world versus states. You know, I, we are headquartered in Canada, provincial, you name it, right? So that's, uh, and also a lot of the regulations are made for humans, right? So there is some changes that need to happen for machines that actually will make the deployment safer. You know, warning triangles is one example, right? And, uh, you know, if you get into an accident or you get to the side of the road, you have to put a one triangle. But obviously machines are not gonna do that, right? So, you know, there is talks now in the industry into how we can do something different, et cetera. But be open to, the world is changing and the world is changing. We have the opportunity to change it for a much better world, right? So let's enable that and let's have, you know, as, as, as common as we can, you know, framework so that we don't need to go, you know, at, uh, every time we change a province or we change a state, we need to change the way that we do things.
Indeed. Yeah.
If, if you look at the progress by SpaceX and also Tesla in terms of their safety performance and one is in the space industry, one is in the automotive industry. I would argue autonomous, autonomous vehicle obviously is harder. When you see in terms of the technology development. And so, um, what I, um, want to say in terms of the difference between the industry as well is that I really think we should, from safety perspective, we really, uh, see, um, think, um, the safety performance as a probabilistic safety. So, so add to your point in terms of proven safety, I think it should be a probabilistic proven safety.
Hundred percent, a hundred percent.
Yes.
But I, I will add to that, that it should be probabilistic and you need to do it before deployment. So it cannot be, I drove billions, trillions of miles in the real world. So you need to rely on simulation, but you need to prove and verify that simulator. You need to prove the realism. You need to prove that that simulator cover all the cases that you might encounter, et cetera. And that's where, you know, the industry needs to go, you know, go to where it is today, is the infancy to the next level. And that should be, you know, a requirement for any safety case, in my opinion.
Xiao Di, do you want to add something?
Uh, I think, yeah, safety is definitely important, but, uh, I think for autonomous driving, the key is actually not to guarantee safety because it's not something that we can guarantee. Uh, trucks can dodge bullets. I always remind myself about that. So, uh, in the end, I think it's, it's more about the liability. And I totally agree with Henry on, um, on one hand, we need to be a hundred percent liable, uh, non-liable for all of the road behaviors. But on the other hand, uh, when it comes to, uh, dodging bullet time, uh, we need to have a more problematic view on how can we minimize the safety incidents instead of like eliminating it, no way.
So we're running against time. Now I just comment that compared to the session last year, I really impressed how much progress we are making here, right? Hopefully a year from now, we'll see another level of progress and really brings the technology to benefit the general society. Please join me. Thank the panel for the presentation.
Thank you.